Ready, okay. All right, I'm counting three, one, two, three. I want to take another one, one, two, three. Gotcha.
All right, yeah. All right, ladies and gentlemen, six o'clock on the dot. Where was Usher? No? Anybody get that? Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, how you guys doing today? Hopefully, you guys are doing pretty good. I am your master of ceremonies. My name is Danika Long. Still getting used to saying that. You guys probably remember it as Danika Foley. That is Danika Long. So, we have a couple of house rules. Take this opportunity, please silence your cell phones. I don't see you moving. There you go, thank you. Silence your cell phones. And we're going to keep this as brief as possible, but we're going to try to definitely get to all of your questions. We'll have about forty-five minutes set aside for our mayors with the submitted questions that were submitted previously, and then we'll take it to the audience and give you an opportunity to submit questions. If you haven't already, you can go to the table to my left, your right, and receive an index card to submit your questions. For our mayoral panel, we are going to try again, keep it brief, and if they continue to go a little bit lengthy, the gentleman here coming up ahead will have a card to give them the wrap-up sign. Tonight is a town hall meeting, which means this is not a parish council meeting. We will not like to use this opportunity to air out your personal grievances. You can meet with the mayors at the end of this meeting, or you can go to their respective offices during their office hours, or sign up for a meeting to sign up at their parish council or their city council meeting. All right, let's get forward, let's get with it right now. It's a six-part series. The first one, we're talking to our mayors. On the flyer, if you remember, it had gun violence, drug epidemic, and home invasions. Let's get right into it, shall we? One of these submitted questions asks, "On a scale of one to ten, how would you rate gun violence, juvenile crime, home invasions, use of meth, use of fentanyl, heroin, cocaine, alcohol, or just the pandemic? What programs do you have available in your municipality to offset those numbers?" And anyone can feel free to start.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Dragon. I don't mind going first. I guess on a scale of one to ten, of course, gun violence would be paramount. I think it's safe to say that any tragedy, anytime someone loses a life to sense there's gun violence, so anytime someone loses a life, I would consider that to be a ten to combat this rising problem that we've... I've advocated and asked for a multi-jurisdictional gun task force. I've asked for that and called for that at our mayor's Chamber of Commerce luncheon to ask for a multi-jurisdictional gun task force. I know Chief Beverly has advocated that. I've met with Sheriff Lee Smith, and I see that Lieutenant Kyle and deputy, Chief Deputy Driscoll, they're here, along with many of the other police departments and all of the mayors. They have assisted us with a number of gun introduction things that we've been doing in the Franklin area. It's not a one-size-fits-all. We do have a gun problem, as you know, nationally. There have had a rise in gun violence nationally. I've said for a number of years now, since I've been mayor, this is my first term. I come to an end on June thirtieth of my first term, and I've said if you're shooting guns in and around Franklin, get out of Franklin, because we're not going to tolerate that. We've increased our police budget to combat the rise in gun violence in and around Franklin. We've given our police officers a pay raise so that we can attract and gain qualified officers that are post-certified, so that we can hit the ground running. And of course, as with any crimes, juvenile crime is also a large part of what is going on. We have a lack of facilities to handle the juveniles that are doing many of these heinous crimes. Some of the adults are using the fifteen- and sixteen-year-olds to carry out many of their heinous crimes, because they're more or less being coddled and slapped on the wrist. I think they need to be handled. I think we need some legislative action from the state. I've discussed it with Senator Ireland, as well as Representative St. Blom, that I think because of the lack of facilities to house some of the juveniles that are doing some of these crimes, I think that needs to be addressed, and the parents have to do their part as well. And again, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Meth, fentanyl use, cocaine usage, heroin usage, all of those are a number of problems that we deal with in the Franklin area. As with many of these municipalities, we pretty much have pretty much the same problems. So, it's a multi-task that we have to bond together and work together as a unit to fight this crime epidemic, especially with the gun violence. I've lost two nephews due to gun violence, so this is very serious. I take it very serious. I think as we look on the fact that the pure savagery and the evilness that exists with the gun violence, it has to be addressed and has to be taken very seriously. And I know we're not tolerating it in Franklin, and the residents have to do their part, step up and come forward with the information that they know about to help us solve these crimes. Many of our police departments, they're running into brick walls as they attempt to these crimes that are ongoing. And I've had enough. I've been very adamant about it. If I had a crystal ball, I can look at things that have happened, I will. It is very, very, very frustrating. And that's pretty much my main thing, is that this has come out in my book. And I know that some common sense believer, I believe part of the problem.
Crime, criminal acts, are at a nine. I am going to actually say most of what I know of occurring in Patterson. So, the pandemic, the pandemic, I would say is at a five. And we saw a lot of the domestic violence increase. So, with the pandemic, we also saw the substance abuse that was increasing and so forth. But I do believe in Patterson, most of the crime is juveniles. And juveniles now know the judicial system and knowing what can be done and what can't be done is basically what's allowing a lot of this to just drag out. So, as I said, in regards to the drugs, the drugs, I'm going to put it at an eight. Criminal, the juvenile, I'm going to put at a nine. Pandemic at a five. What affects Patterson affects the parish. What affects Franklin affects the parish. What affects Morgan City, Burwick, Baldwin? It all affects the parish, the image. Businesses trying to come here, people trying to relocate. But at the end of the day, if you ask what interventions do we have in place, I'm not going to sit here and say we have any, because we have all been invited to go with both Dwyer to Lafayette to basically see what it is all the mayors can do to try to help us out with the judicial system to help with a lot of the juvenile crime and so forth. So, as of right now, we get a task force together. We're hearing from the mayors. We're hearing from the chief of police. We're hearing from law enforcement in general, prosecutors. We're hearing from faith-based. We're hearing from those grieving mothers. We're going to be hearing from the youth. So, when we take all of what we learn at these town hall meetings and put them together, then we can come up with a plan. But I'm not going to sit here and say right now that we do have a plan.
Now, if I may, because every person, if you may not have an answer to it, but I do want to make this a little more conversational, if I may. So, we've talked about the judicial system. We've talked about our police department. Have we talked to the youth? Has there been anyone to actually go in and talk and meet them where they are? Has that been an effort to ask them, "What do you need?" Right now, in this audience, we have mostly adults. Where are the children?
I have several millennials on staff, and millennials really keep me in touch of what's going on with TikTok, what they're seeing on the social media and so forth. Basically, that's how I find out what's going on and what could be a potential threat and so forth. But the youth will be the last session, where we will be able to hear from the youth. That would be the sixth session.
So, ever since I've become mayor, this has been a big topic. Every time I go to Franklin, I talk to Mr. Fohcard. He's like, "Man, we got to do something about the guns. We got to do something about these kids." Look, everybody knows I'm going to say it, because nobody else wants to say it, all right? Take care of your kids. Have the grandparents grab them by the ear and pull them in the house. Nobody, is anybody in here going to tell their grandma no? No way on earth. But until you do it, we're going to keep having these problems, because we need legislature to change to where that age is lower, where we can put them in jail. Now, fortunately, Morgan City has a juvenile court, right? Nobody else has it, right? And there's still restrictions to what we can do in Morgan City. But we more than happy to go help these gentlemen out anytime, and we would expect the same in return, right? So, you know, if you want to go one to ten, the kids, ten. Straight up, ten. They can't act. They don't know how to act. Nobody's teaching them how to act. Nobody's showing them nothing. All they doing is cutting up. That's just the way it is. I see all y'all out there shaking your head. Y'all know that I'm telling the truth. Nobody wants to say it. Gun violence, you know, a lot of that revolves around the kids, because Mayor Fohcard's right, and Mr. Groban's right. The seventeen, eighteen, nineteen-year-olds, they're getting the younger kids to do it, because they know you can't do anything to them, or very little to them, all right? The drugs, drugs is going to be what it's going to be, all right? We need to understand that. The drug problem is a drug problem. It's a problem, that's what it is. We can't solve it, but we can combat it. You know, I'm proud of our police department for sure, because they stay on it twenty-four and seven. We have shootings. We're fortunate. We have a... Fortunate and it's bad, all right? We got to pay for it for one, but we fortunate to have a large police department. And our police department solves crimes. You know, and just like everybody else, we just have more manpower. And, you know, I would have to say sixty-five percent of the problem we got is because of juveniles causing the situation. And it shouldn't be that way. It wasn't that way when we were kids, right? If we stepped out of line, somebody slapped us in the head and went about their business. But, you know, is it going to get better? Yes. We just have to figure out how to make it better. And the only way we're going to better do that is if we all get together and go by the same set of rules. All these people right here, the sheriff's department, all the police departments, and we go and we combat. When we have good officers, we have good people, we need to take care of, right? We need to make sure when somebody's saying, "Oh, man, we don't want the police, defund the police," whatever. Yeah, okay, see what it got us? It got us this problem right here, right? We're in the process in Morgan City of being able to pay our guys more, probably some of the top in the parish, right? Because we don't want an extreme problem. You know, everybody has a crime problem. And, you know, I hate to say it this way, money solves most problems. It just is what it is. But we will go down fighting to protect our police officers, because we know that they're there to protect us, and I'm sure you're the same exact way, right? So, I'm looking at Mr. Fohcard, because me and him talk about this a lot, every time we see each other, matter of fact. So, I would say drugs, eight, you know, is an issue, right? But it's a controllable issue. You can control the issue of drugs by mitigating what happens. Juvenile's ten, because it's almost uncontrollable the way the legislation is set up right now. They working on it, though. They working on it as we speak to change that legislation to lower the age. Home invasions, I don't think we have a real big problem with home invasions in Morgan City too much, but, I mean, one home invasion is too many.
Well, I just wanted to mention, jump on something you mentioned about they're working on it as far as lowering the age limit. We, I know you guys are limited on what you can answer, because you're the mayors. You also have legislators that you have to talk to. But when you mentioned, you know, lowering the age, we also mentioned that the kids are, they know the system. They know once they're locked up, then they're, you know, in the reports, they were handed off to their parents, you know, following any judicial proceedings. So, how do you guys, what method do you use to mend or to bridge the gap between the mayor, the police department, and our legislature, legislation?
Me personally, I talk to some of the legislators about this on a regular basis, and I stay informed of what they're going to, what they're trying to do. So, imagine right now, if the age is seventeen years old, right? Or sixteen, seventeen, right? What if you lowered it to fifteen? How many thirteen-year-olds you know are going to go shoot somebody? Not many, right? But the fifteen and sixteen-year-olds, they're coercible. Let's put it that way. So, if you lower the age lower, you get into a point below that age that they can't, they're not going to do it. They, a lot of them are just not going to do it. You know, they're too young. They're at that point there in grade school. They're too young. So, the bridge in the gap, you know, I'll be honest with you, me as the mayor here, when someone brings it to my attention, I try to rectify the situation as much as possible, but I don't have everybody knocking my door down saying, "Hey, we need your help with our kid." I'll do it, I'll help them. I don't have a problem with it, but there's nobody saying, "Hey, can you help me with this? I can't take care of it." I'm talking about a parent, a teacher, you know, anybody like that. And like I said, our court system in Morgan City has the ability to handle juveniles, and so does our police department, but everybody else has a problem. You have no place to put them if you arrest them. Where are you going to put them? Two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars a day? Or more, probably, I see them over there shaking their head, probably three hundred dollars a day. And, I'm sorry, four hundred dollars a day, all right? Do that for a year and find out how many hundreds of thousands of dollars it is. And the cities have to pay for it. There's no place to put them. The simplest solution is, and I'm telling you all as parents and grandparents, take care of your kids. Take care of your grandkids. Straighten them up, and we won't have these problems. It's the parents and the grandparents, the only ones that could do it, because they're not going to listen to me. They're not going to listen to Gerald. They're not going to listen to anybody up here. They need to, you know, we need to be accountable for where we let our kids learn, and we need to be accountable for what our kids do. That's what we need to do.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Mayor Duval Arthur.
I want to thank you all for coming tonight. You know, I can look back over the years. We've made some mistakes in our system that we use. I remember when we arrested seventeen-year-olds. I think one of the worst things we ever did in Louisiana was raise the age to eighteen. And if you look at the law enforcement officers around this room, I think they'll all be shaking their head in a positive way. That's the worst thing we ever did, was raise the limit to eighteen. It created more problems. Without a doubt, juveniles are number one. Drugs and alcohol going with that. We haven't had very much in the form of shootings or no-home invasions. But we did have a fourteen-year-old that actually twice did a drive-by on an apartment in a car. And he was subsequently arrested, but aged fourteen. One of the problems is, without a doubt, is the fact that there's no discipline at all. Nowhere, nobody. Parents, I can tell you, I raised two kids. If my son would have walked in my house with an AR-15, he would have, I can't say it on this microphone, but I can tell you what would have happened. It wouldn't have been nice, okay? Where does a kid get AR-15? He comes in your house, and you know how much money you make or how much you bring into that home, and you know you can't afford this weapon that he's carrying now. Where did he get it from? He's got no business with it. You need to take it away from him. Do something with the weapon. Definitely need to take it away from him, because that's how he's going to get himself in trouble or get killed, one of the two, or both. And our schools, it's the same way. There's no discipline. The schools, and I wish the schools would get together, have a few law enforcement in there, some clergy in there, and form a task force that looking at things that they can do to improve discipline in our schools, because there is none. And it's just a shame. Kids know they can do whatever they want to do. Nothing going to happen to them. And a lot of them have got their parents so buffaloed that they go home and they just tell their parents what they're going to do and tell them when they're going to come back. Another thing, if my son came in that house at two o'clock in the morning, I'm going to tell you, he's going to find a locked door, and he ain't going to get in, okay? I don't understand how, as parents, we let our kids run around on the street at night at two and three o'clock in the morning, and they're shooting up places. These are fifteen and sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids, and they're riding around, shooting at other people, shooting at cars, shooting at houses. Where are parents to these people? Where are the parents? You know, it should be like a fishnet. You grab the juvenile, go grab the page back to seventeen. Seventeen.
The COVID epidemic is going to be with us for a long time. It rocked us to the bedrock. You've got kids for two years, didn't go to school. They sat there with social media, and they've got to believing that social media is reality. It ain't reality. TikTok, Facebook, that's not reality. I mean, they take pictures of themselves with guns. Somebody sees them, nobody does nothing about it. You know, I mean, we have to bring some reality back to our young people. You mentioned something about recreation. I have a story to tell you. Prior to the COVID shutdown, we had three different places.
Put the mic closer.
We had three places in Baldwin where kids could go play basketball. Governor says, "COVID, we got to lock it down." So, we went and asked him, said, "Would you please refrain from playing basketball?" The governor says, "It wouldn't stop." We physically went out and took basketball goals down. After pandemic eased off, the governor said, "Well, you open the pokes back up." We put the basketball goals back up. Nobody plays basketball. They're not out there. You want to talk about recreation and what have you? They ain't there. The town started to try to start a youth baseball league this year, but the town would pay for everything. All the kids had to do is come in and register. No cost to them. One. One. All right? Now, so when you say is that there's nothing for them to do, somebody got to show up to do it. Not like, it's not like we're living in a vacuum here. Some of the mayors, we all got stuff out there. Come on and do it. But I'm telling you, they hung on to those cellular devices, and that's their lives, that's their lives. I mean, it's just, you know, we compound this. The teachers are not supposed to raise your children. You're supposed to raise your children. They're supposed to teach your children. That's what they go there for, to be taught something. So, and to give them some discipline in their lives, which they need, you know? That's not happening. We don't have magic at home. If it starts at home, then we can really help. But it has to start at home. And look, if you see it, report it. You know, look, police forces tend to be reactive. We don't want a proactive police force saying, "That you know you didn't buy it for..."
...that we need to take out day one.
Personally, I just believe if people will watch and report.
I guess we're noticing. We were in the heart of the community, and the only loud music proclaiming being broadcasted throughout the neighborhoods, because we went into the belly of the beast where we have some of the issues. I'd rather hear the good news of the Lord going out than hearing sirens going out and law enforcement going out and Garrett Driscoll's staff and Chief Beverly's staff and Franklin PD going into some of these areas to combat. She would have been eighty-nine years old, and I can't fathom the thought of my mother ducking in her house. Beverly and I had a conversation about maybe two and a half, three weeks ago, and Chief Beverly have a unique way of scales off my eyes sometimes. Sometimes I could be a little bit stubborn on some stuff. He said, "Ma'am, think about it in just a general term. If we have about twenty-plus folks that work under the roof of Franklin PD, that's forty sets of eyes within law enforcement, just in Franklin. That's not counting the help that, thank God, we get from the sheriff department and all of these various municipalities. They have about seven thousand people, give or take, in Franklin. That's fourteen thousand sets of eyes."
All right? And all the kids go to church, or most of them do. And again, they'll just listen. All they need them to do is listen. Right now, they're like, "You don't know what I need." Y'all all know what I'm talking about. You know, maybe just a little bit different approach will do it. If you're not, I don't know. That's to the mayor's to try to convince him to make that change.
We'll pass it down to, again, actionable steps to prevent what's going on.
And I revamp, do something, the school system. There's problems within the school. And of the ones that know that the children are involved in these activities and are staying quiet, not going to church. No church, no fearing God, no conscience, no heart. That's just how I feel about it. That's why it's easy for them to pop a cap and don't think twice about it. Because I do...
Thank you very much.
I found a sun on yesterday. Hundred and nine kids playing flag football. Two are girls, hundred and seven are boys.
This ball, this pass, and it runs through July fifteenth. So, we have a number of activities that we're trying to keep the kids involved. We would like to start this Operation Night Light to one of the, you know, the lights on the police car. But we wanted him to be at, having some problems, and brought church into the community. And that's the type of things we have to continue to do to reach our community. A number of coaches that will be coaching the team. And so, we praying for peace. We praying for a good summer rec program. And if anyone in front of you, you're welcome to. But this is the type of opportunity that can help change and slowly change the mindset of some...
In Burwick, that'll...
In Burwick, that'll add a little something different to the pickleball players, whether they be able to play outside. We do a lot of children, but I think we're, we're missing that, that age group, that fifteen, sixteen with recreation. So I don't know how we can get them involved other than through the parents or possibly through the church. But I, I know that we'll, we'll do whatever we can to get children involved. Someone every month, it's called a beacon of the month. And we bring, like I say, kids in that have done something special and we recommend.
City workers page, what we need is a town hall meeting and we need to march to all the municipalities and go and tell our problems, okay? While we're on, behind the keyboard and on Facebook and so forth, I don't see none of them here, okay? I'm being honest. But we did hear, so I told you yesterday, let's put this together. And once again, session will be next week and that will be your chiefs of police and your prosecutors, because there are questions that are people asking me and asking all these mayors and why this is not, that's not happening. I see them what the law is and so forth. And then the third week, we will have the actual mental health, we have all the social services agencies, the education system, they will dose. We will probably have the, the coroner here also. And then the last session will be the youth, because if we don't get something in place now as they go back to school and so forth, the fall and coming up to the mayors and so forth, some of the questions that were submitted are not questions for us, they're questions for the police department and so forth. So, and that's one of the things, everybody know, know our roles and what we actually are allowed to do and what we can do. It will help put the puzzle, because it will basically solicit for a grant, because there's monies out there, we will, and we all know it involves, everything involved may not be properly trained. Okay? So what we need to do, we're gonna try to put all the puzzles together and then come up with a task force. And with that task force, we're gonna defeat.
How firmly stick up, we're the one that people see. And so, you know, and it's a, it's a weak thing when I said, you gotta go see the chief of police about that, you know what I mean? It sound like you kicking, kicking the can down the road. And so, you know, I, I think that, that appointed chief would be much better.
Okay.
By the way, I did not ask that question.
There's the pros and the cons. I, I'm satisfied with the elected chief of police, but Chief Grogan would be here next week, the public can ask him questions. He's elected, okay? These two right here is totally different, that's on the side of me, they have appointed chiefs of police, but then there's silver service. So, you know, I'm Home Rule Taylor, you're Home Rule and you're Home Rule?
Larson.
Larson. So these two here, it's, it's not that easy, even with being a, having appointed chiefs of police, because silver service, the board and all that kicks in and so forth. So I'm neutral. But as we took it to the public as to say, do you want term limits? The public said no. You know, so we could go back, we working on charter changes and I'm more than sure if we put it on the ballot in the city of Patterson to go with our elected chief of police or appointed chief of police, it's gonna stay elected. But either way it go, I could work with either one of them.
Bottom line is that, you know, Chief Beverly and I have a very good working relationship, what type of bond should be set on a particular individual, but the judicial system does that. The judges set the bonds. The DA's office play a part in that. We enforce the law, we make the arrests and we go from there and we turn it over to the judicial system. But again, we, we have an appointed chief, I don't have a problem with the appointed chief process that we have in Franklin. I think it has served Franklin well for many years. And again, the silver service.
Same, or actually is the same. We're appointed. You know, you ask my opinion, my opinion is, the people elect the mayor, they are, they're protected by silver service and you still don't get to that issue, that, that, the, the vision that you want to get done. So I believe because we can give them guidance on what we want to see done and then somehow they to this point, but we elect, and, and no, no offense, Mr. Grogan, because I don't know you, but I'm just saying that out loud. And we, we elect this police chief just because we like him, because we know him. So if those two don't see.
Will be, there will be more, no questions? Okay.
But I grew up and said, under the pretext, you will be what you seek.
Taken away. No, you, you can't touch your kids, you can't, teachers can't touch them. They got to be disciplined. And that ain't, don't wait till they grow up to try to discipline. You can't do it. Uh, uh, Chief, remember me? Year ago, tapped my daughter on the nose, right now.
And it was a school system question, but it was particularly asking in regards to vaping and answer for superintendent to listen to. Like Mayor Grogan said, he was standing in Morgan City Junior High, had kinda hit a street bump against it and he had some suggestions. I will remind you that as mayor. Children in those schools and you can in some kind of way be able to help them out. So if, if you have an opportunity, if you just want to give a suggestion, how would you be able to help the principals? How would you be able to help those particular schools, especially in the junior highs, but at the high zone and it should be in some kind of way addressed?
Um, I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll address that coming.
Gas stations or that like little, little small, there's a particular school, I forget what it's called, so if I can find out.
Yeah.
You can find out, you can find out.
Same procedure, they will call Grogan, they will call Beverly, they will call Morgan Cities, they will call Burwick's chief when they need them. They have lawyers in hall meeting, not, not their, not their regular school board meeting, but have a town hall meeting with the school board members.
But remember, I mean, if you could, just on a depth basis, if you could have some kind of, what would be your answer to them, what would be your suggestion to the school system?
Part of the problem, I would tell you, West St. Mary and B E Boudreaux was created when it was developed. They had an officer at the gate, closed campus, and that officer was, would check everybody coming through. The campus, but because of budgeting, because of cuts, this, that and the other, now it's like an open campus. Get someone in place, we will, as long as there's money there, we will start things, but we don't keep it up. So, and Chief LaSalle wanted to have accessibility to the cameras in the school system. No, because of privacy. So we just can't go in, a lot of people think we have a lot of power and this, that and the other. We have, just like we want people to abide by our laws, the institutions want us to abide by theirs. Okay? But we will, if it's off, now if the, if it's off campus, our chiefs and police officers.
Of law enforcement, clergy, professional counselors that could work together to come up with a plan, to Grogan alluded to, can't go on that campus and just take it upon himself to do something. They, they have to be called by that school to come there, whether it's in reference to.
Say something about the school thing. I'm a bus operator. We had four young ladies that were vaping on the bus. It goes back to the school board discipline. What they did was, check this out, I had to bring them to school, they gave them in-school suspension and they rode the bus to support to help us out.
And.
Any more questions?
Also, yes, I, I, yes, I would. Of all of the marijuana laws that have been tweaked and, and, and they're almost non-existent to a degree, that if someone had vaping, but there's a little more that goes into the vaping also than just a vape. Maybe they have a, a clean vape and an illegal vape, but until those different laws are also addressed on a state level also to give our law enforcement the teeth that is needed. I didn't realize until Chief Beverly gave me a breakdown on exactly the, the marijuana issues that, that, that goes on in Franklin and as far as how you can make these various arrests depending on the, the grams and how much of marijuana they might have, you know, if everyone in here, if someone fired up a joint, everyone would be appalled, but we also need to take those issues up with our legislators as well.
Yeah, so you, you correct. I, I, I saw a serious issue and a lot of parents brought it to my attention and I'm just a doer, that's it. I'm not gonna take no BS from nobody and we gonna go take care of it. So we had a meeting with the, with the police department, with the, the school board and one issue was safety, right? The law is the law, nobody's above the law, not the school board, not nobody. Y'all remember what I'm telling you right now. The law is the law, they don't make law, they make rules. The law is what the police department takes care of, the rules is what the school board takes care of. We saw some issues that might be breaking the law. So we were able to go in there and, and, and they, they agreed, they did, it wasn't a roadblock and things did change some, somewhat, right? And I can't get any details about it, but when it comes to this vaping thing, um, we're gonna address it. We're gonna address it in a lawful way, right? A lawful way and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have a new police chief pretty soon. Well, it's gonna take a few months, whatever. And hopefully we can come up with a, a solution to, to handle that situation. You know how everybody twists the law around for their good? Well, maybe you could twist the law around to straighten them back up, right? Not illegal, nothing wrong, you know, but it, there needs to be laws for certain reasons. And if it's illegal, it's illegal, that's what it is, you know, so.
Yes, I'll take a second. I went in there with the superintendent on some issues that I, I was concerned about and know this was, that kids don't start smoking drug, doing drugs when they get to high school, it starts at the junior high level. So my question to her were, why you not testing them when they come out the summer and they come into your program? And when they get to the high school as freshmen, they're already using drugs. And then when you pick up the newspaper, you're looking at the television, you got a kid that's in our parish, guns, alcohol and drugs, and you go to the basketball, football game and they playing on a Thursday, on a Tuesday and Friday night. So I'm going like, well, why is this? What, what statements are you gonna make to the rest of the people when you letting these guys play on Friday, Friday night at the football game? So her thing to me was, well, you know, I said, well, I, I served thirty-four years in it and some of the principal used to make them take the test. I said, well, we at the party now where y'all just putting them out there and knowing that they hadn't got cleared through the police department, they hadn't got everything done, but you gonna get busted on Saturday, you playing a basketball game on Tuesday night. I don't think that's fair and like you said, they have their own law, but they do use the same taxes that we use too at the same time.
Thank you. We want to tailor our questions to the mayors. Is there anything that the mayors can answer for you? Take this opportunity.
Go ahead, hit us with it, we ready. Come on.
Good evening, my name is Carl Foldcard, Eugene Foldcard is my brother. I have one question for Eugene, you worked that community action. We have the Head Start program for kids, young kids, can we redirect some of those funds to have a jumpstart program for young parents that don't really know how to be parents?
Yes.
I taught school at M B M and I was helping Mr. Strevel and I was in the office and a young girl came in from Morgan City High and she said, I need to register. The little girl was with me, I said, well, you need to bring your mother with you. And she looked at me and she said, I am the mother. So, you know, we got young kids having babies, but they don't really know how to be parents. I, I just went to Centerville to get out a kid a couple of weeks ago and when he walked out, when they released him, he looked at his mother and he said, what in the hell took you so long to get here? So I gave the jail back their power and I said, can you please give me my money back? Because I could tell, you know, I've been bonding for twenty-three years and this is probably a kid that I'm gonna have to go pick up and then when I go pick him up, I may be carried by six. I don't want to be carried by six. So I left him in jail. But, you know, I really think, you said, the, the problems start with parents, but parents don't know how to be parents. We don't have any more big mama grumos. Big mama grumos sitting in the backyard, they not sitting on the front porch, they scared right now. So, you know, maybe that's something we can give to Ms. Franklin or Mr. Almeida Keys in Washington DC to see if we can start some type of jumpstart parenting program.
Yes, I, I, I thank you, that's my big brother. I'll address that. As a matter of fact, I had, I had spent twenty-nine years in another life as the COFO for St. Mary Community Action and one of the things that Head Start has done, they, they also have an early start program that deals with parental involvement, it is very heavy with parental involvement, where they teach parents that have kids in that particular program, parenting skills, life skills, how to interview for a job, how to do the things necessary to become self-sustaining and also not be dependent upon the system. But they have, that program has been in place for, you know, a few years, but they're very involved with the parental involvement piece of that. And I do know, and Ms. Grogan is also the, the board chair lady of the St. Mary Community Action and Mrs. Franklin is very, very involved in the community and they have that parental involvement piece where they have really, really pushed that very hard. But I, I will run that by Mrs. Franklin to get a status update on exactly where they are with it, but I, I do know they are very active with the parental involvement piece for the parents with kids and Head Start.
And Ms. Franklin also has what they call in Community Action, the fatherhood program. There is a wonderful fatherhood program and we, the community, need to get more involved with that. I also know about a program called Young and Emerging Adults. That program, you can get grants for that program, we can talk about it at future meetings, but they, they can get from age sixteen to age thirty-five. And it's called Young and Emerging Adults Program and it brings in the entire community to address the needs of these young parents and young people.
We have about ten minutes left. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll go to some of the questions that have been submitted.
Hi, my name is Mary Valla Padron. I want to address my mayor, Grogan. It's concerning, every mayor up there has spoken on the recreational, the kids. How do we go about getting some of the funds that's over here, the civic center, the Rec Four Division into Patterson where it could be at use for the kids? Because this is a moneymaker. All they do is make money over here and it's not used, being used for the kids. Patterson Community Center is, is building up, but we need some of those funds to go there to support that, where the kids can actually be, it can be used for the kids. How do we go about that?
Okay, Ms. Padron, who's my first cousin, all right? All I can tell you is this, I walked into a situation where we give so much money to Rec Four. We, we give twelve thousand dollars a year to Rec Four, but it's the taxes, the taxes that is, the money goes, we have nothing to do with the taxes, the taxes that you vote upon, the tax that just passed, that is the, that's the voters, okay? So we, you have Mr. Les Ruff, parish councilman representing our area, he's the one that we go to get what we need. We tell him what monies that we need to. one that we go to get what we need, we tell him what monies that we need to get into our community, stand up, Mr. Ruff.
How you doing, Mr. Ruff?
So, you see, each one of us have a role. And we put twelve thousand dollars over here from the, from the budget for coaches and this, that and the other, but it's the taxpayers, taxes that you all voted upon, that the Parish Council and so forth, so Mr. Les Ruff and Parish Government deals with that.
I'm just trying to build up these kids, everybody talking about the kids.
Understood.
The kids, the kids, and where do we start with them? It's nothing fun to do.
Correct.
And it, you're losing them at nineteen years old. We have to start building up the kids, the recreational center, which we don't have here, we don't have that in Patterson, those kids don't have nowhere to come for the summer other than the Patterson Community Center.
Yeah, we have the summer rec program, and, and there's no, I, I didn't need to sit here and say what Patterson, I, I basically feel this way, and they may all look at me like they're crazy, whatever we do, they're doing, whatever we create here in Patterson, Eugene going, say, okay, well, we gonna do it, then, but the thing about it is, I think we have a lot that we start, but we can't maintain it, that's the number one thing, is a lot, I tell everybody, I tell, you come to me with a suggestion, I have so many come to me saying, we need to do this with sports, we, I'm not athletically inclined, I could sing the Star Spangled Banner, but the thing about it, once again, a lot of people do a lot of talking, we need volunteers, we need people to give up their time, okay? So, if you will be one that is that.
I've been volunteering as a rank is with me, I raised three.
Correct.
And did very well sports-wise and entertained very well.
Right, so what happens is, and even with Eugene, Eugene has a lot in Franklin, we have the programs, we have the program, but it takes volunteers, it takes people to be there, I mean, someone asked me the other day, can we go back to doing what the crew of mining used to do with dances? Uh, dances over at eleven o'clock and at twelve-thirty, parents have not, still have not picked up the child. You know, so we try to do different things, we try, you know, um, but once again, and Mr. Les Ruff, telling what we need, I'll give you a list of what we need, okay, all right.
Good evening, my name is Holden Murray, I work with Mayor Grogan, I'm over at Community Affairs, as well as we have Ms. Sylvia, Ms. Carrie and Ms. Julia, so we have really over the last year busted our tails, building up the community center in Patterson, so that it can be on par with what's going on over here, so as far as things happening for the kids in Patterson, there are things happening, it might be a slow bill, but it's building, so my challenge to everyone in Patterson is, if you feel like there's nothing being done, if you feel like there's nothing going on, there are things going on, I challenge you to come to the community center, be part of the solution and come and help us out, there's four of us, and we work really hard, we have recreation, we have tutoring, there's not many summer programs that offer tutoring and rec, so we just encourage you, if you challenge us, if you criticize, I always say, if you criticize, use the other C word, I'm gonna challenge you to come and be a part of the solution, so there are things going on in Patterson, like he said, we normally don't talk about it because it's out there, but please, we are looking for volunteers, like he said, there's a lot of people who are saying things, but they're not coming out to volunteer, if you wanna be a village, if you wanna be that in your community, come out to the Patterson Community Center, we actually have a lot going on.
One more question, comment?
Good evening, my name is Keith, uh, Reverend Keith Mitcha, and, um, we talked about a lot of things, and, um, I commend the, the mayors for, um, talking about the clergy, the clergy is much needed, you know, not just in, in St. Mary Parish, but everywhere, and, and a lot of the laws that they've been making, like the man, uh, mentioned about the laws of you can't hit your kids, so we can't pass blame on the, on the, on the, on the, um, on the, the parents, not just the parents, the blame can go around to many, many different ways, but the clergy is one of the most important things, you know, because prayer, we have enough power in this room right now to combat every, uh, illegal thing that's going on in the parish, if we know how to pray. And the Bible says we must pray, you know, without ceasing, you know, one could put a thousand to flight, two could put ten thousand, so what are we doing? What are we gonna do, uh, uh, about our kids? Are we gonna just let it, you know, we gonna let the enemy take control of our kids? No, we have the power to pray, we have the power to pray, and, and, and the clergy is, I mean, is the most important thing, I mean, we should have a clergy at the schools every day, to pray every day, we should have a clergy in the, in the mayor's office to pray every day, I mean, we should get us some meat bags, you know, make that a priority, you know, because it's much needed, I mean, we could talk about the laws, they've been changing the laws since Mother Lute came, since Rodney came, understand? Gun violence is still going on, you know, we need prayer back in school, you know, we just need to, you know, make that a priority, amen?
Thank you very much. And I'd like you guys to give, I'd like thirty seconds just to kinda wrap up your thoughts on tonight's town hall meeting.
Well, uh, I have the mic in my hand right now, so, look, I thank God for everyone that turned out, uh, this evening for this function, I've always believed in the Jeffersonian style of government, government works best when it's closest to the people, in order to know what's going on with your community, you have to have a pulse for the community, as I stated earlier, we had a prayer service on Ninth and MLK last Sunday, and we were out there talking with people, attempting to proclaim the name of the law, but also have a listening ear, because trust is a two-way street, the police have to have a trust level with the community, and the community have, have to have a trust level with the police department, you would be surprised if people that walked up to Chief Beverly and I and Mayor Pro Tim Levine and shared information, talked with us about different information, that is how you reconnect, you have to have a pulse for the community and reach your community, and this is a beautiful thing that has gone on tonight, let us press forward so that we can move forward in, in making this world a better place, and the only way we can do that is with love, so I thank God for this community, uh, town hall meeting tonight, and, uh, may everyone have safe travels, uh, back to your homes.
So, like I said before, we, we're in a different time, right? And we're in a time that everybody in here is here for a reason, you're here because you tired of the BS, right? You're tired of everything going on, we're tired of it, you know why? Because this many people every week call each one of us over the same thing, and, and they're right, until somebody comes out and says something, we're reactive instead of proactive, and I, I personally believe that y'all all want better, and there's a lot more people that's watching this cab, uh, broadcast right now that want better, and a lot of people don't wanna come out and say it, but they want better because they embarrassed or they're not cool or anything like that, I believe this is the start, and that, I can guarantee you, next week, they're gonna be a different set of people in there, right? And if we do that five or six times, it's five weeks, right? Five weeks, we do that five times in a row, y'all have to put this whole thing full of chairs, all right? That's the difference, so y'all made the difference by showing up because they can see you on the camera, right? So, they know how many people's in there, and, and they see us talking to y'all instead of, they would know, people on the camera would know if we only had two or three people in here to talk to, right? There's a hundred, all right? So, if you have a hundred people that show up for the first one, what you think's gonna happen on the second one? And that's how great things happen, they start small and they grow, and they keep growing, and they snowball, that's the way it works. I'm so happy I got invited, actually, you know, uh, but I, I'm coming to everyone, right? And I invite everybody to come on, if you at home, just come, it doesn't matter, uh, submit a question, anything is better than nothing, but I, I believe everybody here's on the same page, and I believe everyone out there wants to see the same thing, we're just in a different generation, and once one of us figure out how to combat it, I can guarantee you, we'll be, we will call the next one, and we'll call everybody, but right now, it's just a tough sell, it, it's a real tough sell, and, but, um, this issue we have, and, and everybody agrees, is on the younger generation, and, um, you know, I, I appreciate everybody being here, it's actually impressive, to be honest with you, so, um, but I'll let the next, uh, Mayor Grogan go now.
Once again, I would like to say thank you all, thank the community center, um, I brought it to their attention, I told them, I said, this will be your task and so forth, and they put it together, but it was a cry out from the mayors, my colleagues, uh, we have a great relationship, uh, we're very competitive, we try to get different things to our community, but until we get this gun violence and the drug problem, um, down, people are not gonna wanna come to St. Mary Parish, okay? Every time there's something out there, um, putting a blemish on it, it kinda makes it hard on the mayors, and, um, I, I thank all of you, um, I, I agree, next week will be a different set of people and so forth, and this is not a bashing session, so those that are planning to come out on next week and to bash the chiefs of police, come out and ask the questions, as Holden said, if you don't come with, um, a possible, um, uh, way of trying to resolve the issue, don't bring it up at all, because when you come to the table, come and with the intentions of getting your hands dirty to solving the problem, and, um, you know, I, I thank all of you, this is very impressive, um, just a start, just a start, trying to get some type of, um, grip on what's taking place, because we're all having problems around the state, around the nation, but they're all at different levels, and I'll say this, we caught, not we, cause I, well, but our police department apprehended one of the shooters, but we were told it would be, it would cost us four hundred dollars a day, we would have to take that child to Alabama and transport him back on court day, well, he was turned back over to the parents, to be continued on next week for the prosecutors.
Well, you know, we talked about the pandemic and its impacts, and particularly about, you know, two years when kids had virtually no education at all, and they're gonna be sitting in the, in the population. Now, they wanna do drugs, they wanna do gun violence, you get to be a convicted felon, you convicted felon all your life, I don't care what they wanna erase, I don't care what they try to correct, you're a felon, you threw away your life, you threw away your life to be a big man, and it's gonna get you nothing, so we have to convince the youth that they're just wasting their lives, and, and look, that's a terrible thing, I'm telling you, to, to watch children just, just thrown away, but that's what's gonna happen, and that's what is happening, you know?
I wanna thank everybody for coming tonight and showing an interest in what's going on, I feel though, when I look around the crowd tonight, we're preaching to the choir, the people here that are here tonight, a lot of you, are doing the right thing already, what I was hoping would come out of this was some fresh ideas on things that we could do, that we're not doing now, to make things better, that's what we were hoping to get. The good thing about this, it's the start, and hopefully we can look forward to trying to improve our area and do something, um. I wanna challenge the mayors, I know I'm gonna stir up something here now, I, uh, they ask a question about our budget that we have for our police department, and, uh, I've checked my budget, and our police department gets one-fifth of my budget, goes to the police department, and what that equates to is one point two million dollars that goes to the police department, to take care of the police department. I, I, I try to do as much as I can for them, I guess, um, I feel that way because I was in their, their seat, I was the police chief before I was a mayor, so I know how important it is to have the money to pay the officers that are out there doing this job that they're trying to do, so I wanna challenge the rest of the mayors to look at your budget and work hard to try to find the money to pay those officers a little more, and take care of those that are serving us, thank you all for being here.
And thank you very much, and the transition was, I was gonna save those questions for next week, for your chiefs of police, of course, please come back out on Monday at six o'clock here at Patterson Civic Center, I am your master of ceremonies, Nika Long, and I will see you guys next time, thank you so much, be safe.